Okay. Call the meeting to order. We have one change to the agenda. Under Town Managers Report, the Police Chief's Review of the Establishment of the Speed Limit, we're going to move that up to just past approval of the Treasury Warrants and Pending Contracts. And with that change, no objections. We'll accept the agenda and announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is being audio and video recorded in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law. We have 2017 Committee, Board, and Commission vacancies now, and people are able to apply. The Board will have a couple of public hearings, and we realized today that we mistakenly published the wrong date initially for the public hearing. There's going to be two public hearings, one on May 24th for the first batch of applications, the second on June 7th, and then appointments be made on June 21st. There's a lot of information on the town website about what's available, and so please, if people are interested, go there and look at the website. The WannaComit Water Company's Water Main Replacement Project in the Prospect Street area, as we, I think, all very painfully know, is continuing on, and hopefully will wrap up in the next two-ish weeks. And I wanted to make the Board and the public aware of one other thing that isn't printed on the agenda, but it has been published in the newspaper. We have two upcoming neighborhood meetings scheduled for this Nantucket Harbor Shimo Plus Sewer Project. The first is next Tuesday here, sorry, the first is next Monday here in this room, Monday the 15th, and that is for property owners in the Meadowview Drive area. This project will affect your neighborhood. The second is Tuesday, May 16th at 5:00 p.m. in this room also, for the Bayberry, Tashma, and Green Meadows areas. And letters are going out to all property owners affected by the project. Those should have gone out today, so people will be getting a letter about this. And there's another public informational session in July for people in the Shimo area. But if people would like to get up close with the engineers and with specific questions and inquiries, they may do that at these meetings. Next, we have the Police Chief is going to come forward and review a proclamation for National Police Week, which is next week. And then we will have a presentation of departmental personnel awards, and I think the idea here is that the Board and myself will come out front and do it that way.
Good evening. This National Police Week was originally first declared back when John F. Kennedy was the President, and he had determined that May 15th would be National Police Officers' Memorial Day, and that the week that May 15th falls on would be National Police Week. And it's an opportunity for communities to get to know what their police departments, the good works that their police department have done for them. And we've taken the opportunity to use National Police Week as the week that we honor our officers every year that have, that deserve recognition, officers and employees, not just officers, that deserve special recognition, we think, for the good deeds that they've done. So does somebody read that?
Sure. Does anybody else want to read it?
Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week that May 15th falls on as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Nantucket Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Nantucket, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Nantucket Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Nantucket call upon all citizens of the Town of Nantucket to observe the week of May 14th through 20th, 2017, as Police Week. During this week, citizens are encouraged to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the Town of Nantucket to observe Monday, May 15th, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service of their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to their survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to start out by saying that as public safety first responders, the men and women of the Nantucket Police Department handle many different situations that when considered singularly make it easy to just say that these individuals are doing their job. But when you look at the complete picture, you quickly realize how effective they are at doing their job, and how important it is to the overall health and safety of our community. Our first award is the Life Saving Award, and it's going to be given to Officer Christopher Kelly. In 2016, Officer Kelly responded to three separate incidents of suspected opioid overdose. In each of these cases, he quickly recognized the situation at hand and took the appropriate actions by administering nasal naloxone, Narcan, consistent with his training, and reversed the deadly effects of the opioid before death occurred. As a result of his efforts, at least three lives have been saved. Officer Kelly is being awarded the Life Saving Award for acts performed in the line of duty which through prompt and alert action resulted in the saving of three lives. Congratulations, Officer Kelly. The next award is the Meritorious Conduct Awards. The first set go to Detective Sergeant Thomas Klinger, Detective Brett Morneau, and Detective Michael Cook. In 2016, this department responded to 17 reported drug overdoses, two of which resulted in the victim dying. The detective unit spent countless hours doing surveillance, interviewing narcotics users, and compiling information on a suspected heroin trafficking ring operating on Nantucket, all of which led the team to secure a search warrant for a residence. As a result of that search, two individuals were identified, and enough evidence was obtained to establish probable cause to place them under arrest for trafficking in heroin. Further investigation resulted in the charges being amended to trafficking in fentanyl, which is an enhanced crime and is more than likely responsible for the overdoses and deaths this community has experienced. As a result of their efforts, Nantucket has seen a significant decrease in overdoses and overdose-caused deaths this year. They are being awarded the Meritorious Conduct Award for their actions in this highly complex investigation, which by bringing the case to closure surely resulted in prevention of death or serious injury to future potential victims. Congratulations, gentlemen. Now, this next one, I have to put a little framework in place because what this gentleman's being recognized for, a couple of people coming up later should probably be the ones getting the award, because usually I say training and experience leads to good police work. Well, in this case, this kid had about three days' experience when this incident occurred, so it was only his training that allowed this to happen. Patrol Officer Brian Jackson. On October 1st, 2016, Officer Jackson responded to a reported intoxicated male party, refusing to leave the premises of another person. While responding to the call location, he was advised by the dispatcher that the suspect had taken a knife from the kitchen and was now attempting to forcefully gain entry to locked bedrooms in the residence. While approaching the residence, Officer Jackson was confronted by the male suspect, who was in possession of the knife and holding it in a manner that would lead a reasonable person to believe that the suspect intended to commit an assault on him with that knife. He quickly and appropriately responded by drawing his service weapon and issued clear and unambiguous commands to the suspect to disarm himself and surrender to his custody. The suspect promptly complied, and the situation was resolved without anyone getting hurt or deadly force being applied. Officer Jackson is being awarded the Meritorious Conduct Award for a highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with some degree of hazard to life and limb to himself where death or injury of a third person was prevented. Congratulations, Officer Jackson. As a member of the Nantucket Police Department, these individuals are often called upon to fill many different roles beyond those typically associated with their position or rank. What they actually do for this department is often unseen, yet no less necessary for the successful operation of an effective police department, and ultimately, the safety of a community. Sergeant Brendan Coakley, Sergeant Daniel Furtado, and Sergeant Kevin Marshall. Sergeant Coakley ensures that all the department's equipment is functioning as designed and makes sure that repairs are made in a timely manner when necessary, often performing the repairs himself, saving significant amounts of funds for the department. Sergeant Coakley also makes sure that each of the cruisers is properly stocked with lifesaving tools such as naloxone, first aid supplies, and working AEDs. He also supervises the NPD's Marine Unit, which works with the Harbor Master, conducting SAR missions, patrolling special events, and making sure that atons are properly set and remain on station throughout the season, as well as ensuring that the Marine Fleet is properly maintained and seaworthy. Sergeant Furtado supervises the field training and evaluation program, which is designed to train newly appointed police officers once they graduate from the police academy. He also is involved in the effort to change the department's use-of-force policies and training, making sure that sanctity of life is an important component of any training where the use of force by the police is an option. He is a pioneer in the implementation of the Police Executive Research Forum-sponsored Integrated Communications and Tactics, also known as ICAT training, as it relates to use of force by police officers. And he serves as the team leader for the department's Special Weapons and Tactics Team, making sure that the team is trained to a level to assure that stressful and dangerous situations can be resolved with a minimal risk to the public, the suspect, and the officers involved. Sergeant Marshall oversees the Crime Prevention Unit of the department. This unit is responsible for providing many of the services to both this department and the community that make us more effective in addressing community disorder and safety issues. He is responsible for bicycle safety training, elderly service programs, department honor guards, suicide prevention training, and he recently became certified in crime prevention through environmental design. He also is responsible for the highly successful volunteer and policing program, also known as VIP Program. He has been especially successful in working with this department and others to make sure that the first responders in Massachusetts are properly trained in how to work with persons with mental illness through the Crisis Intervention Training, CIT, program. These three sergeants are being awarded the Community Service Award for their highly credible accomplishments, bringing public acclaim to the department or the police profession as a result of devotion to duty and service to the public. Congratulations, gentlemen. Detective Carnavale serves as the department's Training Officer, Firearms Use-of-Force Instructor, Intelligence Officer, and Police Accreditation Manager. In these roles, he's been instrumental in the development and implementation of an updated use-of-force model that is based on a program developed by PERF, known as the Integrated Communications and Tactics, ICAT. This innovative use-of-force training model provides for the sanctity of human life as the guiding principle. Detective Carnavale uses scenario-based training utilizing the Multiple Interactive Learning Objective, or Milo, system, to allow officers to experience in real time the decision-making required, emotional responses expected, and likely consequences of their actions when force is used in various simulated situations. Detective Carnavale is also a certified ALIS instructor. He has been working with the Security Department of High Line Cruises to develop an active shooter planning and training program that is currently being reviewed by the United States Coast Guard for use on all passenger vessels in the First Coast Guard District, which is all of New England, an accomplishment recently acknowledged by the Captain of the Port, U.S. Coast Guard Southeast Sector, New England, in a letter to the chief. Detective Carnavale is being awarded the Community Service Award for his highly credible accomplishments, bringing public acclaim to the department and the police profession as a result of devotion to duty and service to the public. Congratulations, Detective. On July 30th, 2016, these two dispatchers handled two near simultaneous back-to-back medical aid calls, a suspected overdose at a local club, and a call of an unconscious male at the beach where CPR was being performed on the victim by unknown persons. Due to their knowledge and experience, calm demeanor, and quick actions, all of these situations were efficiently dispatched and appropriately logged, which in turn allowed the appropriate public safety agencies to handle them effectively. They simultaneously provided critical information to both the callers and the responding public safety agencies, which significantly enhanced the odds for the best possible outcome for these types of calls. Dispatchers Teresa Edgar Anderson and Eric Hever are being awarded the Community Service Award for their highly credible accomplishments and their devotion to duty and service to the public. Congratulations, Dispatcher. Dispatcher Patricia Haney, who's not here, she's on vacation, Dispatcher Patrick Considine, and Dispatcher Kyle Gomes. On August 13th, this is a date we all should know, August 13th, 2016, Dispatchers Haney, Considine, and Gomes were assigned to the evening shift when significant, several significant events and calls for service were received in the communications center. A serious motor vehicle collision occurred with 10 victims, four of which were young children. A family dispute, an OUI arrest, a boat in distress, and a child custody dispute were all effectively managed and logged and appropriate emergency response units dispatched, all this while the Boston Pops concert was underway down at Jetty's Beach. Due to their knowledge and experience, calm demeanor, and quick actions, all of these situations were efficiently dispatched and appropriately logged, which in turn allowed the public safety agencies to respond to handle them. Dispatchers Patty Haney, Patrick Considine, and Kyle Gomes are being awarded the Community Service Award for their highly credible accomplishments and their devotion to duty and service to the public. Congratulations. And last but not least, and this is one that we really especially appreciate from the police department's side, we have a category of award called Outstanding Volunteer Service Award, and this year's recipient is our VIP, Pat Kleiner. Pat has been chosen to receive this award after the program coordinator, Sergeant Kevin Marshall, noted that Pat had put in 272 volunteer service hours in 2016. This translates to an excess of $10,000 in volunteer service to the community. Having been an active volunteer since 2014, she has reliably showed up for work every Monday morning to work at the information window. While at the information window, Pat is the first encounter for someone entering the police station. She greets each person with a caring smile and a warm heart. On top of her window duties, she's always willing to assist with special projects throughout the year. Pat's investment in the program allows for other employees to fulfill their primary functions and provide services that may not otherwise be offered. Pat represents the VIP program with compassion and trust. She's a tremendous asset to both the program and the police department. Congratulations, Pat. Thank you. And she's not bashful about telling us what we need to do every once in a while. And that concludes our awards for 2016. Thank you.
Is there anyone who wanted to say something tonight about a matter that's not otherwise on the agenda? Hearing none, and probably no new business.
Close to the mic.
Sorry. We'll go to Approval of Minutes Warrants and Pending Contracts. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I'm with approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Approval of Payroll Warrants, Treasury Warrants, prove those by unanimous consent. And now we'll discuss the review of the speed limit.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Town Manager asked me to come give you a little bit of background and idea of what we're doing with the recently passed at-town meeting, the acceptance of the Mass General Law that allows communities to establish a 25 mile an hour speed limit in thickly settled neighborhoods. Town meeting did accept the general law. The next step is the town has to decide how it wants to implement this. There's two ways. One is we can implement it on a street-by-street basis, or the other is, which is the preferred method, by both our perspective and from Mass DOT's perspective, the preferred method would be to adopt island-wide, that 25 mile an hour applies in any thickly settled neighborhood. The benefit of that is that we can eliminate all of the speed limit signs throughout the community that are proliferating everywhere, because all you need to do is post the primary entries to the community. Three places we've identified, the steamship, the High Line, and the airport, would need one sign that says "All thickly settled neighborhoods are 25 mile an hour." And the statute requires motorists to know what's thickly settled and what's not, although we're going to help them out a little bit. On the screen behind you, we just, and this is very, very preliminary, believe me, we're doing a lot of work on this. There's a committee, that's myself, Mike Burns, Rob McNeil from DPW, and Art Gasparrow, and Lieutenant McVicker. And we've gotten together, and what we've decided is the town overlay district is definitely thickly settled. There's, you know, you don't even have to guess that, and that's all of the shaded area with yellow. These other roads, the red ones, are public roads that, based on their zoning, would be thickly settled. Now, those will require a site visit to determine if they truly meet the criteria. And the criteria for thickly settled is that over a distance of a quarter, of an eighth of a mile, which is 660 feet, I think, that if the houses are located less than 200 feet apart, that's considered thickly settled. And as we know, in vast majority of these areas, that would be the case. There's a couple of things we could do. We could post yellow, thickly settled neighborhood signs up throughout these areas, just as a reminder to people. But most importantly, we can get rid of the various signs, like the 20s, the 30s, the 25s, et cetera, because none of those are legally enforceable anyway. And this is a problem that we are wanting to clean up with this project. We want to, right now, if there's a speed limit sign on Nantucket that's anywhere other than a school zone that says 20 mile an hour, 35 mile an hour, 45 mile an hour, unless it's on the milestone, it's an illegal, unenforceable speed limit. Because the only statutory speed limits in Massachusetts which apply to all ways in which, you know, are public and ways that the public has access to are 30 mile an hour and thickly settled, 40 mile an hour on rural, non-divided highways, and 50 mile an hour on divided highways. So on Nantucket, we basically got school zones, thickly settled 30 mile an hour zones, and 40 mile an hours on Pulpus Road and Maticet Road. But we recognize that by adopting the 25 mile an hour speed limit island-wide in thickly settled areas, there are certain streets that go through thickly settled areas that don't warrant 25 mile an hour. Just off the top of my head, I think South Shore Road would probably be an example. Fairgrounds Road would probably be another example. Old South Road would probably be another example. That might be better suited to be 30 or 35 mile an hour. In order to do that, there's a process to be able to do it and legally enforce it, and that process is that an engineering study needs to be conducted. And we've done the research on what that takes. It's not easy, but it's not hard either. It just, you know, we basically got to count cars and record their speed, and et cetera, et cetera. And we believe that there's probably a dozen roads that we can identify that should be subject to a special speed limit, or what's called a regulatory speed limit, something other than the 25 mile an hour speed. It's possible a regulatory speed limit could be established that's 20 mile an hour, because the conditions of the road, the speeds traveled, the hazards that are nearby, you know, would justify it. But as MassDOT will tell you, that's pretty rare. But anyway, we do this study, we then send the information to Mass DOT, they approve it, they then send back a regulatory adoption letter to this town, which you guys would decide to accept or not accept, then we send it back to the registry, and then we can post these signs and legally enforce these speed limits. We can clean this up. Another part that wasn't accepted at the last town meeting that we're going to put forward for the next town meeting is Section 18B or C, which allows the town to establish special safety zones. Safety zones are areas around hospitals, theaters, parks, historic areas, things where you might have, like, for instance, you know, what comes to my mind immediately is Wisconsin. You've got tight roads out there, you've got tourists on the roadways walking, that could be considered probably would meet the criteria for a special safety zone. Special safety zones are statutorily going to be a 20 mile an hour limit. So we have to, first of all, adopt Section 18B at the next town meeting, then we have to have, with safety zones, we do have to have an engineering study. We have to commission an engineering study, and we have to then go through the I dot, or the MassDOT approval process to get it official. But then, once we do that, we can now, we could then enforce the 20 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour zone out in Wisconsin, and the core area would probably be another one that might qualify for that. But in the interim, we think the best solution for us is to amend the traffic regulations. We recommend that the traffic regulations be amended, the 25 mile an hour speed limit be adopted, in thickly settled areas be adopted island-wide, and then, you know, that way we don't have to go through it on every street. we don't have to go through it on every street and figure it out, and we don't have to post signs on every street. We can just get rid of a lot of these speed limit signs. We can post three big signs, they're two foot by five foot, in these three locations we talked about, and we can then safely and legally enforce that speed limit throughout these thickly settled areas of the island. And we'll bring that forward. I believe we're going to have to have a public hearing about some other issues with, regarding traffic regs, that you'd requested, something about, you know, parking permits for things. We could probably do all that together and get this moving.
Jim?
It makes a lot of sense. I'm all in favor of having speed limits that you could enforce, and also to reduce the number of signs in the community would be awesome. I think you put a lot of thought and work into it, so I'd certainly be a favorite.
And what we'd also have for you, hopefully by then, is an actual map that shows those thickly settled areas that you could also possibly adopt and make part of the regulations too. That way, we could put it on a website, and if anybody said, "I didn't know," say, "Well, there it is."
I have a question. Yeah, I was going to ask about the 20 mile an hour. And I'm happy to hear that we're considering it. Would it be appropriate for somewhere like the Boys and Girls Club, or is that already covered by the school?
That's, that probably could be covered by the school zone. And the interesting part about that is we can, you guys can do that based on criteria. And I don't know that anybody's ever asked for that to be a school zone, but if it's something you think we should do, we could bring forward a recommendation on that.
And the other thought I had, and the same thing might have to happen with the new bike paths coming out, along that stretch might be somewhere else. The other thought I had was, I'll go on, it'll come back to me. I lost it. It'll come back.
Actually, question about the school zone. The way the signs read, it says when children are present.
Yep.
Can you clarify what that means?
Well, yeah, actually, what it's supposed to have is there's supposed to be hours that it's actually in effect. And those would be during the hours during school. Now, what some communities have done in other areas, and I think some people in Massachusetts have just picked it up, they put when children are present. And what we interpret that to mean is if the children are along the roadway on the sidewalks or whatever, if you're going by the school and they're in the playground and there's a fence there, they're, they're not a hazard to the road. So midday, you won't have a problem. But if you go by there before or after school while they're walking along sidewalk, that's when the 20 mile an hour takes effect. But we should change those school zones so that they're, they're in effect from certain hour to certain hour. That way, it's absolutely clear. And that's actually something we're going to talk about at the committee.
And potentially during the summer too, when camps are being hosted at the schools.
Yeah, there's no, it doesn't, it, it applies to any school with grade K through eight is eligible to have a school zone. Doesn't matter if it's public, private, camp, whatever, as long as the board, all that has to happen is there's supposed to be a crossing in the road. And Rob, you correct me when I go off base here, but I don't remember exact criteria, but I think there's supposed to be a school crossing, there's supposed to be a certain proximity to the school, and there has to be a K through eight, and, and the hour should be posted that it's in effect. And, and the Board of Selectmen has the power to adopt it and post the signage without any Mass DOT approval.
But a safety 20 miles an hour is all the time, right? That isn't...
A safety zone, if, if that's adopted and we're able to get it approved for like Wisconsin, the core, maybe some other areas, like I can see around the Stop and Shop, potentially that'd be a good area, those are, it's 20 period, it's all the time.
It's not just children present.
Not just children present, it's 20 period.
The other question, yep.
The only thing you have to do is you got to post it, that it's a safety zone, and then you have to post a sign that says they're leaving the safety zone is all.
My other question, I remembered it was, when you guys are looking at this, are you considering what are the bike routes and how those factor in?
Absolutely. A bike route that is separated from the roadway is less of a hazard than a bike route that is adjoining the roadway, like out in Matticat and some of those. And one of the other things we're considering, and Matticat Road's a good example, Matticat Road by statute should be 40 mile an hour from Matticat to, to the cemetery. And at those curves where we, people should probably slow down a little bit, what should be there are advisory signs that say curve with a recommended speed on it, not a speed limit change. Study has shown, there's, actually, I got it cited in here, that putting up a speed limit sign that's too low for what's appropriate for the roadway actually does nothing to slow people down on the road. And what it does do is, is it makes it illegal for us to enforce the speed, period, on that road. So, you know, we need to fix this. And I think we're, these two things will go a long ways towards getting us there.
Right. So do we need to schedule a public hearing? Do we need to pick a date?
Well, we've got the other stuff ready, and we'll have this, I would say we'll probably have this in another couple of weeks, so we could schedule it for some time in...
We'll figure out when, maybe, maybe the June meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. And do we have funding for the engineering study?
We're, we're trying to identify that. There's some of that engineering study that can be done by the police officers. It's a matter of just sitting there in a car with a radar and logging. I think they have to do it over a two-hour period, not peak period either. They want it when the traffic's flowing freely. And then you count 100 cars and measure their speed, that's one part of it. Another part DPW probably could do, it's, it's doing a assessment of the geographical features of the road, the hazards, the curves, the things like that. It's really, once you get the, there's a 26-page document that really gives pretty straightforward. But I think at the very end, if we're talking about doing it for all of Mattic, I mean, all of Wisconsin, and then a dozen other roads, we may be better ahead and more efficient if we did figure out what it's going to cost and try to hire something to be done.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We are on to citizen departmental requests. We have a resignation from the Historic District Commission Associate. We should probably thank, thank Matthew for his service, and we have someone who's applied to be appointed until the term ends in, at the end of June.
Motion to accept the resignation, and to send him a letter of thanks.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
A motion to appoint Mr. Dutra?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. And now, we have a request from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think there are some people here to discuss that.
Good evening. Tucker Holland here on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm just going to give a brief introduction to a short presentation, which a group called the Young Creatives, representative, representatives of which are here, principally Samuel Golding and Justin Taylor, who will be speaking tonight. And so, just a little bit of background on why is the trust fund coming to you? We're coming to you tonight to basically see if there is some support amongst the board for this type of creative housing solution. We have, as you know, been looking at a variety of different projects, have gotten involved in a few new programs. We're anxiously awaiting the bids for the Six Fairgrounds Road project next door in a couple of weeks. But this is a group who came to us about a year ago initially, talking about the challenge, particularly of the millennial generation to find appropriate housing here on Nantucket. These are young, motivated contributors in our community who have decided they would like to make Nantucket their home for the foreseeable future, but it's been next to impossible to find suitable, affordable, stable housing. And so, they've come up with a creative idea. This isn't, they're not reinventing the wheel, this is something that has been done in other locales around the state. And so, without too much further ado, I'll let them walk you through it, and then maybe I'll make some, give you some update on discussion that was had at a trust fund meeting earlier today.
Thank you, Tucker, and good evening.
Introduce yourself.
This is about a five or six-minute presentation.
Just introduce yourself.
Oh.
For the people at home, I have to know you.
Samuel Golding.
I'm Justin Taylor.
So we formed a nonprofit corporation last year, and our mission is to provide stable rentals for at-risk year-round residents. To do that, we plan on acquiring a fairly large, a fairly large property suitable to house 10 to 14 members in a communal environment. And that house will be cooperatively managed, so member-managed. And board, board members of the nonprofit will also be drawn from the tenants themselves. Five tenants plus two community trustees on the board of the nonprofit corporation. We found out that these properties can be had for 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars. We've seen over a dozen of them, crunched the numbers on four, and found out that we can offer a sliding scale of rental income to cover all the expenses and build a reserve fund for low-income tenants. So we're targeting 75% low-income members, and then capped at 25% moderate-income members. The idea here is that as these members of our community become more stable and grow in their careers, they're able to move on and up to other affordable housing programs that offer actual homeownership. And that will allow new members to come in and the cycle repeats. So if this is a replicable model, we could establish several of these cooperatives and run it through the nonprofit structure. To do this, we work closely with the Cooperative Fund of New England, federally certified CDFI mortgage lender that specializes in cooperative enterprises. We studied a lot of different cooperatives, and the Boston Community Cooperative helped us to adapt their charter, bylaws, membership agreements, rental agreements. We wrote a business plan, produced financials that have been reviewed by our mortgage lenders, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is currently about to start reviewing them. And our primary mortgage lender gave us pre-approval for a significant portion of the, of the mortgage already last year.
So this project is a kind of community cooperative that's been developed alongside the community? This, this became an idea last year, we held a think tank for Young Creatives, and we had 40-plus members of the community come in, including some community leaders like Tucker and Ann Kuspa and Jason Bridges, come and talk about the problems that our demographic faced when it came to affordable housing. And kind of three core values jumped out. We weren't looking necessarily to own a home, we looked for stability, affordability, and community. And by the second session, the cooperative idea was promoted, and by the end of it, we knew what we were going to move forward with. So we took this concept, this idea of a cooperative, and started working with local housing organizations like Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Housing Nantucket, and reaching out and really becoming educated from experts about how this idea actually integrated into the Nantucket community. We then wanted to start to educate and encourage conversations so we could gain more perspective about what people were looking for and how we could best serve the needs of our community. This came in the form of things like a business after-hours with the Chamber of Commerce, or also getting publications in magazines like M Magazine and Yesterday's Island, which really spurred conversation and got the word out there about what we were, what we were working on. We then began to really promote and recruit members into our organization using Facebook and our website, as well as other social events. And we saw in the first 24 hours, 35 applicants just kind of showing the interest and the need that we had already kind of heard about. And so, we have then continued to recruit members through places like the hospital and the town, as well as putting out bids with the school system. So really trying to put the message out to the people who we know are in need and who we know are consistent year-round residents.
Okay, so what emerged out of the workshop was that there was a perceived gap in the current landscape of affordable housing programs, and particularly for working-age residents under the age of 34, and also kind of over the age of 55, this, like, on both bookends of the family demographic, they may not be ready for homeownership for, or just able to afford a homeownership. So they, their priorities are to lower their rent and to find stable housing to avoid the Nantucket shuffle. And they happen to be a pretty good fit for communal living, which is why we went forward with this idea. So we're going to, as a 501(c)(3), well, we're a nonprofit, we're going to apply for 501(c)(3) status, and to meet IRS Safe Harbor guidelines, and because the financials work, we will cert, 75% of our tenants will be low-income, so 80% AMI or less. We're going to cap it at moderate income, 120% or less of AMI, and we're going to prioritize as much as we can financially, the lower end of the spectrum of low-income earners. Based on our member applications that have come in, these are year-round residents, they work in a variety of fields, including the schools, a couple of nonprofits, the hospital, town employee, startups and small businesses, and also construction and artists.
So cooperative, this cooperative model is not a novel idea, it's just kind of new to Nantucket. What we found is that cooperatives exist across the world, across the United States and across the state of Massachusetts, and here are a couple that are listed, that we've actually been in contact with, especially the Boston Community Cooperative. Cooperatives have this really built stability in them, and that comes from their governance structure. And we've actually had a lot of that governance structure passed on to us through the education in the community that comes with being a part of a cooperative. So from bylaws to amendments to operation agreements to lease agreements, we were actually able to get that from the Boston Community Cooperative, which they've built and, and kind of edited and adapted over the last 10 years. But the other part of stability really comes from the community within the household. So there's aspects built in, like weekly meetings and internal boards, that really, cooking dinner every day and being volunteering, that really helped to build stability within the household and that community aspect. Now, things will happen, and they can be negative things, right? There could be problems with members in the household, the washer could break, you may need to reshingle the home, but that stability that comes with the governance of the community helps to handle that. But also, positive things may come about that may not come to mind right away, like you're going to be teaching people in a community aspect how to properly run a household, and how to run a nonprofit, and how to work on a board, and how to work in a community, people who aren't necessarily your relatives, right? How to come together and build community in a single space. And those types of benefits, we believe, will flow into the community as a whole. So every household is unique, but we have a great footing and a great stability that comes from a really strong and proven governance structure and a really strong and proven community model that will allow us to take on and handle whatever things may arrive.
So this is a revenue allocation graph. For an example, property that costs 1.5 million dollars, we would collect $145,000 in rent annually. And as you can see, it's mainly going towards mortgage payments, but also covering nonprofit overhead, such as expenses like income verification, annual audits, so 3% goes to that. Household operations and maintenance, all the utilities, taxes, insurance, some, some maintenance of the, of the property itself, although there are assumptions about member sweat equity in there as well. Lastly, we would collect an additional reserve fund of 9% of our revenues, and that would go towards covering major projects, planned or unplanned, or supplementing our, if our occupancy is less than our projections for any period of time, the reserve fund could be trained to offset that. That would support, for example, three moderate-income residents, five low-income residents, three very low-income residents, and three extremely low-income, which is less than 30% AMI residents. So it's a sliding scale of rent. Yep, there we go.
So we kind of wanted to, yeah, open the forum for...
Yeah, and so maybe I can give the board a little bit of an update. So again, as you can see, these, this group has put a lot of thought and time into thinking about models and how the program could work, and looking at examples in other communities where it has worked. And we've had a couple of meetings recently as a more specific opportunity came before them, and they wanted to kind of reengage on this. So we're still poking, poking at the concept, still formulating a bit of our own answers to some of the questions that I'm sure many of you have about how this all would work, specific instances such as, you know, in case of dissolution, in case of default, you know, is it going to be fair housing compliant? Compliant, there are obviously a number of different things that we would want to have I's dotted and T's crossed. and t's crossed on before we said, yes, we want to go, you know, full-force forward with this and seek approval for using something on the order of a couple hundred thousand, $300,000 is in the example up there, which as you all know, we need to come to the board to get approval to do from the trust fund. But in terms of today's discussion, I just want to let you know where the trust is headed and its thinking. And this was a discussion with the young creatives, so I don't think I'm saying anything that we didn't talk about earlier today and they have a sense of where we're headed on. So, as Samuel pointed out, this is targeted at 75, 75% of the residents would be at the 80% AMI or less level, which is definitely a segment that we're concerned with trying to address here. The trust has, I'm going to say of the five members who were present today, it was unanimous in their thinking on all of these points, I believe, that probably would be structured as a loan versus any type of grant. I think we're looking at, if there's interest, it might be accrued. But it would be due upon the sale or turnover or refinancing of the property. We, one of the things that we mentioned to them is we would like to see, let's call it, some skin in the game from the members of the cooperative. And so, if we look, for example, at the Closing Cost Assistance Program we have, we know that the financing programs that are out there for the 80% units, say at Beach Plum Next Door here, those buyers are coming up with 3% of the down payment when they get a mortgage through one of our local mortgage lenders or elsewhere. So, that's kind of the target that we've said, you know, we'd love to be compatible with some of these other programs that are targeted at the 80% AMI and less level. And I think we kind of gave them something to think about. They had inquired about, is there some way that a portion of that might be viewed from a sweat equity standpoint? You know, this is still to be determined a little bit, but in essence, we want to see some skin in the game. Of course, it's going to need to be fair housing compliant. I'll mention that Town Council has taken a look at actually a more extensive deck about the project and several supporting documents. They did not see anything that was a deal breaker as far as not being able to move forward with it if the trust so chose, but they did have some questions about some of the I and T items that I'm bringing up here. They did actually ask one question, which was, would it make any sense for the trust actually to purchase the property and own the property and then lease out? And without taking up too much time right now, I'm going to say that avenue is not really a desire of the trust. There are more complic-- it takes some issues away, but it adds other complication. Then, so some safeguards in the event of, you know, if things, you know, happen to go wrong or south, the trust, you know, we would insist on having a right of first refusal in any kind of agreement. Obviously, there would need to be a mutually acceptable, some mutually acceptable agreements with the other lenders involved. The young creatives had indicated that in the case where it was being dissolved, any equity that they had built up in the property would go to a nonprofit housing entity or efforts such as a Housing Nantucket or the trust that could go, you know, to any, you know, and any qualified nonprofit party. In the event where things are going well, let's say, and this concept is working terrifically and they outgrow it and they say, we don't need this unit any longer and we would like to go use or purchase another unit or situation works better elsewhere. So, we've come up with some thinking on how would funds be returned in a positive sale? So, if in their example, there's a 1.5 million purchase price today and a few years down the road, we're selling it for 2, the trust has put in 300, let's say for sake of argument, upfront. Over the course of the period, the members have paid down the mortgage by, let's say, an equal amount of 300. What we proposed is in that scenario that the mortgage lender obviously would get paid first, they're taking 900, we're getting paid next. The members would then be getting the 300 to put into a new entity and that sort of would be a condition that is going to further this, you know, housing effort. And then, we would be splitting the access above that. So, the additional 500 would get split, 250 to the trust and 250 to go into, again, a new project. So, no one would individually be benefiting as a member of this cooperative. So, that's not written in stone, if you will, but that's sort of the direction we're thinking of going to, think about how should the town and the trust be compensated for its risk? What's appropriate in different situations? You know, we are trying to think through these, all of these elements real-time. Then, we also talked about while the loan is in existence, the trust would very much like to see, i.e. insist on a board representative from the trust on the board of the cooperative and, you know, therefore, access to financial reporting and just making sure that things are, you know, going along as everyone predicted they would go. And if we, you know, if we see an issue, you know, then maybe we're in a position to, you know, try to be proactive about addressing it. Finally, we have not, you know, we've not, you know, gone through, again, on the legal side, you know, any procurement issues or considerations. We don't think there are any significant ones, but again, Town Council's done a cursory review, but before we went and spent some more money with him in a more detailed way, we wanted to get a sense, again, of this board, if this is sort of headed in a direction that we all think, you know, may make some sense. And then, shy list eligibility, I'm going to say, we certainly would inquire with the appropriate agencies, which is probably D H C D in this case, but it's probably unlikely that this would qualify on the shy list mainly due to the fact, and we completely are sympathetic to it, that you normally need to involve a lottery process in order to qualify in the shy. This is obviously a very close-living situation and the makeup of that community is very important, so they need to be able to be, not discriminatory, but selective in terms of how the, how the parties interact and get along. So, happy to answer any questions and thank you for this opportunity.
Well, I guess I'll jump in. What is, how do the members buy into this? You're saying maybe 3%, but what's the--
We're currently planning for two months' worth of rent as a kind of member deposit. And so, that's about 1.6% of the purchase price. We could take a look at increasing that. These, I mean, and that's up to exploration with the trust fund, partially depends on the membership makeup and, you know, a lot of them don't have much money. That function, that deposit functions a little bit like a deposit, but the nonprofit can use it to offset expenses if need be and so, it's not guaranteed to be paid back. However, if they move out and there's enough money or another person moves in and pays their deposit, then they can be taken out.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the business cooperative structure and they usually, they typically will look for the cost of a small, of a used car. So, they want about 20 or 30,000 dollars. People don't put that up upfront necessarily, they'll pay it over five years or 10 years as a note, but it's also when the person leaves the business cooperative, they get that money back plus interest, whatever the business has increased. So, instead of saying you don't get anything and splitting 250, in his example, you know, 500,000, 250 here, 250 there, people that leave get back what they paid in. But it's substantially more than this, slightly different model. Substantially more than 3,000 dollars, which is what you'd be looking for. But that's one thing. I'm happy to hear some of the skin-in-the-game comments. That was one of my concerns. You know, in theory, I like it, but I think the devil is in the details and I don't think we're at the detail level yet. Another thing that is, that just thought, looking at the presentation, is 4,000 dollars a year enough for nonprofit overhead for, you know, for what it's going to take to actually oversee this and if it is shy-eligible and people have to be put in and all that stuff? Is that a big enough number? And I'm not sure that's for you guys to think about.
Should I, Matt, should I respond to your questions?
No, I'm just giving them out. I think you're working with them. You can, you could, but, you know, I just, I'm sort of putting them out for, more for the Affordable Housing Trust, you know? If you want to respond, you can, but, you know, I'm just saying, some of them are happy, but--
Okay. Well, for the nonprofit overhead, the current assumptions are the cost of an audit and then the income verification and not much else besides that. And the reason is it's all member-managed fairly low overhead.
Where will you advertise when there's a vacancy?
So, we have had experience with digital marketing. So, both Facebook, so like traditional ads, so it could be the paper and we're focusing only on Nantucket, right? So, paper, Yesterday's Island, but also we have an active Facebook page, active Facebook group with over 250 members and a little bit of savvy in that world as well, of our application that comes from so far. So, we'll make sure to be open to different demographics as well as being involved in the community. So, when we're looking to put, fill a spot, I think household references are going to be a really great avenue because their relationships already have been built to some degree.
But I'm assuming there are some fair housing requirements in terms of having to let anyone apply and then you would make it, you could make a decision amongst the applicants.
So, like the police chief kind of said, I think he's a police chief, but he mentioned like if we publicly put the new speed limit on the website, then it's, it's the promotion of it and so, people have to buy by the law. I imagine, you know, we have a public website and we have the application open and rolling applications, then we're kind of always advertising for whoever would like to join to put an application. And when it comes time to strategically find, fill gaps in our household, because things like income are going to be important for making sure that we're able to have the right ratios in place, right? We'll be able to approach that. But there's, you know, it's, it is open and it is out there.
Just one comment, then a question. I can tell you that this is a very passionate group and they demonstrated their kind of community participation by participating when a delegation from Nantucket went to the State House and testified before the Joint House and Senate Committee on the housing legislation that we put forward in town meeting and, and were very, did a very nice job. My question is, what are you looking for the board, what action are you looking for the board tonight? Are you asking, is this directionally correct or, I mean, I just--
Yeah, it, we're looking for a sense of the board, is this directionally correct? If we keep marching down this road and sorting through, you know, ensuring that it is fair housing compliant and the other items that have been brought up here in the direction I was trying to outline at the end there for coming out of today's trust fund meeting, are we, you know, is there something that you've heard so far that's like a big red flag or a deal breaker that, you know, so, so we know when we come back, if we get a sense tonight, and not really looking for a formal vote, I don't know, but just a sense that we are headed in a positive direction, but that when we come back, we've addressed the types of concerns that Matt has brought up and others have brought up.
Rita?
I'd like to say that I'm very supportive of the concept and I think you guys have put a lot of time and effort into getting it this far. I think in terms of what would help going forward is definitely, like Matt said, some more details on particularly number seven, which is the case of default sale of property and dissolution. So, really fleshing through that and understanding in different scenarios how it would work. I think the other one is possibly a sample application and understanding more about the application acceptance process and knowing how you'll be selecting, knowing that it's Town Council-approved, that it's fair. Those are two things that would be, I think, really helpful in getting this further along.
I'm in support of this as well. We've been saying we need new solutions to housing and new ideas, well, this is one. So, I think we need to keep continuing to explore it. You guys have done a lot of work and I applaud you on that. And I, so I agree with Rita's, what everybody else is saying, keep going. I would, I would like to continue to keep going. But I have more questions on if 50 people apply, how does that process work? You know, and maybe you're trying to figure that out, but is it Housing Nantucket, like who, who's the third party that, that kind of vets all this? Or 100 people looking for one room? I'm just using extreme to make an example, those are the kind of questions I'd like to, I'm sure they're coming.
Matt?
I'm not so sure that you're being extreme. If there's that opportunity for that amount of money to not do the shuffle, I think it could be pocketed. And so, you know, and when I was asking about the nonprofit overhead, I was sort of assuming that there may have to be a vetting process through Housing Nantucket or someone else that pre, you know, that might pre, you know, pre-select and then you guys can do the final selection. It might give you three candidates and you pick one. There might be some, something that you could put together that would make it shy-eligible that, you know, that would satisfy the town on the shy end, but also take some of the vetting away from you guys because that itself is not going to be an easy situation. So, maybe that, you know, if there's, I don't know, 50 people that have applied to Housing Nantucket or 100 people for various, and some of them fit your criteria, age and et cetera, then maybe you do a final vetting on them. I don't know. But those are some of the issues I'd like to see explored.
One clarification, age isn't a criteria.
Okay, it can be anyone. I noticed the 35 and, but you're targeting certain, you're assuming certain people will--
We are, we are seeing that certain people have a tendency to apply and that confirms our kind of initial starting assumptions.
Gotcha, okay. And the only other question I have is, so Tucker is, how much is in that Affordable Housing Trust Fund now? What's the balance?
Including allocations from this year's town meeting minus some commitments that have already been made, I'm going to say roughly 2 million dollars.
Okay. So, you're taking, so you guys, so what I would ask the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is to make sure that they've looked at all the competing things and, you know, and vetted that.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, the types of things, considerations we think about is, you know, where can we get the biggest bang for the buck? And so, if we think about next door, six fairgrounds, you know, will there, won't there be an ask for some infrastructure dollars when proposals are put in? Will the trust, you know, support that? Let's, you know, say it's a million dollars for sake of argument that somebody asked for and ultimately that gets bought into, you know, so then, that's a grant. I mean, that money isn't coming back and that's going, you know, so we'd be underwriting, you know, 30,000 dollars, you know, per unit. That, that is, like, that's an easy decision to make when you compare what the average subsidy is for projects around the state. Like, I mean, that's a sixth of what normally would go into an affordable projects. But this, this is, and maybe this is part of the reason we're leaning toward not grant but loan, is that, you know, in effect, the money comes back. If, if we believe that-- that over whatever period of time this piece of real estate would be held, it would not go down in value. And obviously, history would say that's a pretty safe assumption here.
Over the long term. In the short term.
No, no, right. But that's, over the time that it's being held. Yeah.
If it's a long term.
Yeah.
One more question.
Yes.
The seventy-five percent of eighty percent AMI, is that, can you move that around? Or is that something that's, is that kind of like your kind of best guess in the beginning?
It's a floor, um, and it meets IRS Safe Harbor guidelines to be certified as 501(c)(3) for affordable housing. Um, and the moderate income cap is something we worked out with the trust fund. Um, it allows some members to pay a slightly higher rental rate, which serves to offset the rents of the low income tenants.
So that small portion of the twenty-five percent, you can move around if you, if you need to?
Yes. Yes.
And, and that is compliant with what we're able to do as a trust in terms of serving principally the eighty percent and under, but then a certain portion of moderate, which is not actually defined in our, it's not a defined term for the state. Um, just one thing to, uh, uh, something brought up there. So how, in the model, housing Nantucket is, it's incorporated in there for them to do the income certification part of it annually, you know, to make sure that that aspect is being addressed.
And so I just want to make sure that four thousand dollars is enough to do the various certifications and things.
Yep.
When, when do we expect to come back to the board with?
Um, I, I think the biggest, the, probably the, the biggest thing that we need to, um, you know, from what I've heard tonight and sort of knew coming in is we, we have to get the definitive fair housing approach, uh, identified and, and the pros, the advertising and the selection process to make sure that it, it adheres. Uh, there, you know, eight federally protected classes and Massachusetts has its own additional eight protected classes. So we need to ensure, and that's obviously where we want to invest some money with town council. Uh, so to answer your question, I, I think it, we'd like to do it as soon as we can, but it may take a few weeks to sort that out.
I mean, I'm, I'm hearing from the board and I feel that with myself that, um, that the concept is supported. Um, I think that some valuable parameters would be that it seems like it should be a lo, a loan that would, you know, get paid back to fund future projects. Obviously a low interest loan. Um, you know, maybe there could even be something creative with a balloon payment. Um, and that it would make sense to have a larger initial reserve from all of the memberships. Like if it, say it's a one point four million dollar purchase price, that would be three thousand per resident. Um, doesn't seem, seems doable. Um, I'm, think that they probably need to relook at numbers about initial reserve because if something major happened, you want to be able to, you know, do a significant project if needed. And there, there's only so much you can do with donated labor. There's a lot of costs in materials and appliances and
Yep.
Things like that that add up really quickly. Um, I'd also want to make sure that for whatever neighborhood, the property landscaping is well maintained. There's got to be parameters on vehicles. Um, yeah, because I, I think that, that there could be neighborhood concerns with noise, with fourteen people occupying a residence.
Mm-hmm.
And with vehicles. Um.
And just, sorry, I may not have mentioned earlier, but we have, you know, checked in with planning and zoning and it, the level of membership they're talking about is by law compliant. So.
I mean, I would assume that it will be a property that's serviced by sewer.
That, that would be ideal. Yeah.
And, um, in regard, I mean, in regard to moving forward, obviously specifically identify, I know there is one property that they had looked at, um, quite in depth, a purchase price, get appraisal. I want to make sure that the town's not immediately in something that's overpaid.
Once we were talking, talking about a specific property appraisal inspection, you know, to the satisfaction really of both boards.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is, just kind of too far, but what is the format that's best to come back to you with? Right? What do you really want to see when we come back? Kind of gave out points, right? But what kind of format is, uh, best? And in that interim, how can we best communicate the progress that we're making so that you're well informed and that we don't have to, uh, you know, we're making the best use of your time?
Okay. I think, did you want to make a comment? Board of Health Director?
Roberto Santa Maria, Public Health Director. Two major red flags come out here. One, if it's not on sewer, you are limited by the size of your septic system and how you use that septic system. Two bedrooms per, two people per bedroom maximum in a septic system. And then two, the second one, the housing code. One hundred and seventy square feet of living space per person, not including kitchen, dining room, living room, or bathrooms, or closets, or basements. So two, two thousand five hundred square feet for a seven bedroom house, it's not going to work. So you're going to have to look at some of these pricings and that sort of stuff, um, because we're limited by a housing code, which is a state law. And if we do find an overcrowding situation, we will have to ask you to evict them.
We researched that law, but I would love to sit down with you and do the number again just to make sure that we're on the same page.
Please, this is the first I've heard of this. So please reach with us. Thank you.
So I, and I'd also like to make sure that, that they're, have contracted with housing Nantucket or some type of organizations going to do the vetting for them.
Did you get an answer to your question?
Not specifically, no.
Okay.
Sorry. Can you repeat that question? What exactly do you want, do we want you to come back with?
What exactly would the best format for the next presentation be? And in the interim, how can we best go about educating you to answer some of these questions as we fill, as we fill them in? So the presentation is not overbearing, right?
I mean, I think you can work with the trust fund and then just bring everything back to us.
I mean, I, I think we've heard, we've heard some specific concerns tonight and the beauty of a public hearing, getting some input from the health director and, you know, relevant issues. So I think we, unless there are issues that have not been talked about that are, are central, uh, I think we've heard the, the main things we want to come back and address and that, as mentioned before, the trust itself is, you know, getting a little more into the financial model they have and poking some holes. And so I, I think, I think we know what we want to, when we come back, we want to have a complete package addressing all these areas.
But the asks should come from the trust.
Yes, it would. Yeah.
You know, specific properties, specific price.
Yep.
I think you can bring it all back at once.
Cool.
And I think, yeah, the point Don made about parking, I, I was about twenty-five people in four different buildings to be able to run my business. I own some property down the street. And originally, some of the neighbors were, you know, we had one house, it was a little out of control, neighbors were upset. When I sighted the next house, I put it with the back to that, to that neighbor. And all of a sudden, all the problems went away. And what, and we don't allow the employees to decide where to park. We have a set parking area and we sort of limit it to so many vehicles. And we have found, you know, sort of, and we put my father-in-law, you know, in the back watching it. And so we found that some of those, some of how it's set up and how it's sighted, uh, gets rid of some of those problems. So it's really important. You might find a great house, but if you're going to have, you know, fourteen vehicles or eight vehicles, and if that house opens up into someone else's backyard, that isn't a great house, you know, which is common sense. But I think there's certain issues you can take care of on the front end if you, if you do it right. And the only other thing I want to say to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think the, sort of the, the parameters you're setting are positive. And I would like to see the Affordable Housing Trust, and you've heard me say this, but I'm saying it so the board can say it, think about things that don't just cost money. Uh, you know, is there any zoning changes we can make? Is there any incentives we can do, you know, not for you guys necessarily, but for, you know, we've done it with sewer hookups and sewer fees. Is there any incentives through zoning or other areas that could help us with this problem as well? Because I think we've been giving money, you know, to a lot of projects the town has for a lot of years and we're still way behind. So we're going to have to tackle this from a bunch of different angles if we're going to make any dent.
I mean, that, this could solve the Nantucket shuffle problem that's been around for years for fourteen individuals. That's just a drop in the bucket
Right.
Of the problem that we have on this island.
That's, when we were talking about some skin in the game today, we kind of brought it back to, you know, if I, uh, were tired of doing the Nantucket shuffle, uh, and at an age where living in a cooperative would be really interesting and rewarding, to somehow come up with three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars to make it work is a relatively small investment, uh, to have certainty on your housing horizon on this island. Um, and I, I think.
Yeah, I think allowing for a varying income level there when you're creating that ask would be workable.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think to Matt's point, uh, it's, it's an excellent point. And I, I know I served on the trust fund for a year and Rita's taking that seat. Um, most of our discussion was about how to spend the money.
Exactly.
And I think there's, I don't know what, how to, I don't know what those opportunities are, but we have a group that could be exploring those. We have the, you know, we have the, um, housing production plan that may be a, a way to launch some of those conversations. Uh, so I think it's, at least from the trust, I think that's a, a direction that I would personally like to see them.
And if it makes you feel any better, in another item at the meeting today, we did talk about a zoning change.
Rita?
Yeah, I just want to say as well that I think keeping in mind that, uh, if this all goes well, which I'm sure it will, um, this is fourteen people in perpetuity. It's not just fourteen people, you know, assuming that young professional at some point may be able to afford a house and, and someone else moves in. So, you know, fourteen people over the next twenty years, it's twenty-eight or it's forty people. And I think the other, um, valuable, uh, very valuable part of this is that this could be a replicable model so that it's fourteen people for the next two, three years. But if this works, then we can use it and we can really expand it. So it's fourteen people, Nantucket Shuffle ends now, but I think there's a lot of scope for it.
And that's, um, one of the things we're looking forward to as we build the membership list, really getting real data about how many interested people there are.
Great.
But if, if it's replicable, you have to make sure that you're asking enough upfront to the first group because the more money that, the more money that the trust puts up through, through debt or through loans, that means the less the town puts up, which is more that's available for the next group. And it would be very hard, let's say for argument's sake that three thousand is the number, but it could have been six. If it was actually six, we'd get twice as much done, twice as quickly. So, you know, so, and it's going to be hard to ask the next group to pay more than the first group did. You know, maybe we could do that, but you have to, we have to think through, like you guys can think through it from your side, but the housing trust and, and we have to think about it from that side. You know, how do we get more of this? And how do we put something in place that really is replicable, you know, and that throws money back so more people in your situation can do, do it? I mean, that's the, you have to balance the two. And I think that's, you know, what the conversation tonight's been partly about.
And Matt, I had a thought about that, which is, um, you know, establishing the first one is always the hardest, uh, for obvious reasons. We have a lot of plates spinning in the air. And part of it is, you know, all of these members, prospective members, they're in leases, you know, the times are shifting, right? And this has been, even though we've been working on it for a year, just a concept to them, right? There's no house. And so once we get over that hump and it's, uh, a physical place, there's word of mouth, there's outreach, and we could identify, um, you know, maybe more moderate income groups of people that are very interested in this, once they see how it functions on a practical basis.
Okay. Is that what you need?
This feels like a bunch of thumbs up. Yes.
We'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, public hearings. Public hearing to consider application for alteration of premises for an annual all alcoholic beverage restaurant license for Salmon Row LLC DBA Atlas Restaurant, Brand Gold Manager, one thirty Pleasant Street.
Yes. So this is an application, as you said, for alteration of the premises, um, for the liquor license of Atlas Restaurant at one thirty Pleasant Street. Um, they are requesting and have applied to, um, construct an outdoor dining area for twelve additional seats. It's on their outdoor, and I think there's photos in your package too, on their outdoor front patio that faces, um, Pleasant Street. They're proposing to remove the railing on the front porch elevation and create bench seating on a stone and brick patio at grade level with tables and removable planters, um, in that front area there as well. Um, they brought this to the planning board to, uh, add these additional seats and also requested waivers and special permit relief from off-street parking provisions, um, that were on the property, which they did receive and that was approved, um, last month with the planning board. Um, so they would be adding the twelve seats, um, and that would be added to their liquor license. It would be liquor service. Um, about seventeen years ago, I think, an original special permit that was just kind of unearthed this week, um, did have language in it regarding, um, dinner service only and brunch on Sunday. So they are only allowed right now to have dinner service and brunch. Um, they're going back to the planning board to add, um, lunch service and to apply for that relief as well. Um, so that came up this week for them and they're going to be doing that shortly. So I just wanted to make that additions such that should that decision be approved by the planning board, if that can be a condition, that that will be approved as well, if you do approve the alteration of these premises.
Madam Chair, I'm accusing myself.
And it is an annual license. It was, started out as a seasonal with them in twenty fifteen and then they quickly switched to an annual, uh, last year as well. And I think the owner here as well, for any comments?
Um, I just need to say, I, um, I was advised by town council that I can't, that I can't sit on this, but to make a disclosure that, um, my husband's business does laundry for Atlas.
And I've been advised to disclose that I sell them bread every once in a while. So.
Come on up.
Hi, Gabrielle Gould, Salmon Row LLC, Atlas. Um, yes, so we would like to add twelve outdoor seats. We're going to do a stone patio, which we have hired Wilder Designs, um, to help us build. Um, we will only serve liquor during, uh, it's, uh, service out there, wine, beer and liquor, um, until seating is done. It won't be, and I, I, I think we seat until ten, our kitchen closes at ten. So we're not looking for outdoor cocktail service into the evening. Um, you know, it's going to look really cute. It's not going to affect the parking at all, the handicap or any other spaces. And I just, you know, it's a, clearly a summer thing. It's not going to be out there year round, but as a year round business, um, one of the things that we would like to do is have a little bit more street appeal, curb appeal, um, from the outside. And we have had a lot of our diners ask us about being able to sit outside. So this is our way to do that.
I have a question. I'm not sure to who, but has the building department okayed this? I'm wondering what happens without a railing when you're not serving?
Um, it's, if, if you under, if you, sorry, there's two railings. Uh, there's the handicapped railing that's going all the way up. You can see that's remaining. It's the second railing. It means nothing. Um, literally the people will be sitting, we're going to turn it into a bench. Um, they will be sitting up against the second railing. There's nowhere for anybody to fall off. And yes, we've had building and HDC approval because we're going to move those stairs that are on the side for some very odd reason to the front of the building because they're these two big beautiful doors that we'd like people to be able to see. So no, there won't, we are not going to have anybody fall off the deck.
Yeah, looking here, it looked like they were sitting on the edge of the deck from the photo. I'm like, oh my God.
It's, it's a double railing and we're going to put cushions along it and try and make it comfortable.
Um, this is a public hearing. So is there anyone here who's not working for the town? No.
That's not being paid to be here?
Um, any other questions from?
I just noticed on some other, um, licenses, although it says dinner and alcohol service to end at a certain time, there's also a, and, and, you know, everything will be cleaned up by, say, thirty minutes later. And, uh, as a way to make sure that, um, the plate, you know, the, the space is vacated.
Can I, I add, and I didn't make this comment earlier, I think it was in the comments as well, is similar to other patios that we've, um, discussed recently, is to make the condition that it is for dinner service only and for food service. that it is for dinner service only and for food service only. It's not, and which I think that is their intention, it's not an outdoor bar, it's not extension of the bar, it is for and with food service only, which with the state guidelines is consistent with that, that we would make that condition.
So if service, if people are seated at 10, but you said you've got service to end at 11?
That was a recommendation based on, especially next door, when they did relief from the special permit on when Island Kitchen overtook the Gray Lady area and extended their premises, that special permit had been to 10, they got some relief on that and it was extended for outdoor service till 11. It was consistent with the neighborhood and that was the recommendation.
But when will the, because as I said, I've seen in other licenses, service ends at 11 and everybody'd be gone by 11:30.
Correct.
Is there?
The recommendation, it's up to you to determine, you know, how you like that to read. The recommendation was to be consistent with that neighborhood, which was.
And not have the.
Service ending at 11.
Not have the wrap-up time.
Correct. It should be a very specific time. There's a wrap-up time on licenses as far as most of them ending at 1 and all patrons need to leave the facility by 1:30. I think that's what most licenses are.
So what is?
Let me just close the, should I close the public hearing? Yes, okay, go ahead.
I guess what is, so the other business, what is their license say? It says.
The outdoor. Yeah, because initially, the Gray Lady area and that special permit, MCD, there was no alcohol service or entertainment after 10:00 PM. When they did do the alteration back in February, they allowed it until 11.
No, they have an entertainment, they play music outside though, is that correct?
Correct, correct. It was, it was alcohol and entertainment, so it included both. And that was just a recommendation to be consistent with that, so, but it's up to you.
But you're not asking for an entertainment change outside?
No, we won't be putting a band out there. Yeah, no.
Questions, comments?
No. But if you want a motion, I'd make a motion, unless there are any questions, I'd make a motion that we approve the recommendations from Amy's department as outlined in this.
Do we need to add on the, when a lunch gets approved, do we need to add that?
I would like to add that language that should the planning board approve lunch service, that we would allow that as well on the license. So they don't have to come back again for that, yeah.
So it covers that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, okay. Open the public hearing for a modification to the same applicant's entertainment license?
Correct. So for Atlas, on their entertainment license, earlier last year, I think at the end of 2015, they applied to have live entertainment after dinner service. What happened at the time was the fire department asked them, required them, per regulations, to upgrade their alarm system, as we've done in several places. In order to have live entertainment, you would have an alarm system which would turn off the music and up the lights in the event of emergency if the alarm goes off in a fire. They did do that. They upgraded, and I spoke with the fire department, they did what they were required to do. The capacity's only 48, it doesn't trigger the sprinkler system at that point. They're not asking for changing that occupancy. At the time, when it was approved, the maximum number of events was put on 24 events per year. We did that as, obviously, this was a new thing, just kind of testing the waters, seeing, you know, how it played out. There's a concern, obviously, of restaurants becoming nightclubs and that sort of situation. So I think it was, it was put on for that reason. They're asking to be released from that limit. We have not had any complaints in the year or so that they've been doing this. They've been good at keeping that capacity where it should be. You know, it hasn't been, they've been keeping someone at the door doing that and that was our concern too as well. So we don't have any direct objections to that being released. You know, should there obviously be any complaints or problems that arise, like anything else, it would be brought back for a hearing, but there are not objections to that.
Did you want to say anything?
Just that we have been working with local bands and local performers. We're looking at doing a couple of cabarets with the theater group here. There's a jazz trio that would like to do some jazz nights. And for us, if we only have 24, we have to say no to all of those to keep the, you know, the bands that we've, you know, kind of already started working with going. We're not looking to be a weekly, year-round entertainment spot. At this point, you know, the 1:30, 2:30 mornings are not easy on us either, so we love doing the every other week. It's just, even if you met that out through the 11, 11 and a half months that we're open, we're going to run out of time. We really do take our occupancy and our business seriously. We always have someone at the door. If you drove by this past Saturday, you'd see that there was a line from 10 o'clock until we closed, making sure that we were maintaining what was appropriate for us. Literally, right across the street from the fire department, the fire, some of the guys have been in. One of their nephews is in a band that plays with us once a year. And they've come in and they, both firemen commented on how well we were doing and how they were really impressed with, you know, how we really are keeping capacity and we're going to continue to do so. I do understand the 24 when we first opened. I know that we were an untried and untrue entity, but I think that we've done a really good job of keeping our rules and sticking with them. And we'd like to be let go of the 24 and be able to work with musicians a little bit more freely.
Public hearing? Any comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Jim, did you want to make a comment?
No, I just, Amy and I chatted before and I asked the question about why the history of the 24. She answered that, it seems appropriate to expand it. And I asked if there were any violations or complaints and there weren't any, because we've talked about noise. So she answered all my questions.
Any other comments? Someone want to make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Okay. We've already done Town Manager's Report. So is anything you wanted to add? Okay. Selectmen's report and comments, are there any committee reports?
I don't have a committee report, but I wanted to disclose one thing. I got dressed this morning before I had coffee. I put on a purple jacket and a recent high school student from, graduate from Nantucket High School reminded me that when he looks at me, he's been conditioned to hate this color. So I want to make it clear that I will never, as a board or selectman, wear a purple jacket.
Or tie.
Or tie? Not a tie, but, so I apologize, anybody who's ever had to fight in the vineyard on anything, it was a bad mistake and I apologize to the public.
We'll expect to see you in May next week.
This is to be expected, you're new.
Yeah, rookie mistake, you know, I'm really sorry.
CPC's annual forum is next Tuesday, the 16th, at 4:00 at the African Meeting House. Hopefully, people will attend. Motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.